Good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to the January 16, 2018, meeting of the Glendale City Council. This is our first meeting after a kind of a long break. It's good to be back and welcome everybody. Maybe have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanyan, Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Garpetian.
Here.
Black salute.
Black salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian, followed by the invocation by Al Garcelazzo, Senior Chaplain out of Venice Health. Please rise.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
I invite you to bow your heads with me as we pray. Dear God, we are glad to be here tonight at the city council meeting and pray that you will continue to bless our mayor, city council members, and all those who live and work in Glendale. We are also grateful and thank you for the civil and religious liberties that we enjoy and pray that these may endure. Now be with us here tonight. We pray that our words and actions may reflect your love and your grace, for we ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
The agenda for the January 16, 2018, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Friday, January 12, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And what's next?
Next, under Presentation and Appointments, 3A is Agenda Preview for the meetings of Tuesday, for the meetings of Tuesday, January 23, 2018.
Sir, talk.
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian, members of the city council. Next week, our housing authority only has one item on its agenda, and that's the approval of minutes from the January 16 meeting. The meeting of the city council in the evening has one consent item, and 4B is a report from Glendale Water and Power regarding amending an existing professional services agreement with MSO Technologies for Technical Support Services on the Water SCADA program. Under Adoption of Ordinances, is an adoption of an ordinance, urgency ordinance, amending sections of Title 30 of the municipal code related to establishing standards for accessory dwelling units. And finally, under Action Items, there's three. The first is a report from Water and Power regarding the Grayson status update. At 8B is a report from Public Works regarding design and engineering services for renovations at Glendale City Hall. That'll include City Clerk's Office, the City Attorney's Office, the Parks Office, as well as public restroom upgrades. And the final report will be from the Police Department regarding a request to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize entering into a three-year agreement with enforcement aviation services for maintenance of our helicopters.
Thank you. And what's next, please?
Next is a 3B proclamation for Olympics of Peace.
Mr. Chang.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, City Manager, and City Staff. This is a great event of a celebration. We have a double celebration tonight, and that is one of Korean-American Day, which we've been doing every year. And the other is that we have Winter Olympics being held in Pyeongchang, Gangwon Province in Korea. I know there are some harsh wars went back and forth between our neighbor, North Korea, and the United States over some nookie stuff, but, you know, South Koreans having this Winter Olympics to offer peace, you know, to the world. And, you know, thank you very much, City of Glendale, to honor this event and also proclaim this event to send a message to the rest of the world. This is indeed an event to be enjoyed and to be celebrated. And here with us today, we have a very important guest that's joining us here tonight, and that is, we have new Council General, Honorable Council General, Wan Jung Kim, that who joined us on December 27th and has started his duties as a Council General for Korean-American community here. And without further ado, I'd like to bring up Council General Kim to the podium.
Yeah. Annyeonghaseyo. The Mayor, Batan, and the Honorable Councilmembers and leaders in the Korean-American community, and ladies and gentlemen. This evening, as a new Council General of the Republic of Korea, I am very pleased and honored to join you in celebrating Korean-American Day and on behalf of the Korean President Moon Jae-in to read a part of his congratulatory message on Korean-American Day. President said, quote, "One hundred fifteen years have passed since the first step to the U.S. territory was marked by one hundred two Koreans who departed the port of Incheon on freezing winter day and finally arrived at the port of Hoonarulu in January 1903." From that time on, the scattered Koreans forming exemplary communities and took deep root in the ground toward a new life. Americans welcomed the Koreans with friendship. I, as the President of the Republic of Korea, would like to extend my sincere gratitude to American friends, end quote. Taking this opportunity, I would, I also would like to extend my sincere gratitude to Mayor, Mayor Batan, and other distinguished council members for, for the, you know, the resolution of the Games to be a peace, Olympics of Peace. Thanks to your invaluable support, I'm confident the Pyeongchang Olympic to be held the next month will be successfully held for the world peace. Thank you for your invaluable support. Gamsa-hamida.
Council General Kim, first, I'd like to welcome you to Glendale. Thank you for being here. We have, we have, I see so many, you know, familiar faces, my friends. This is here, Dr. Sol, Charlie, Charlie John, that's what he calls me, War-tan John all the time, so.
There we have.
I want you to introduce.
And also from National Unification Advisory Council that joined us tonight.
I want to welcome all of you and thank you for being here. I have two proclamations for you. The Korean-American Day, you already said what my proclamation says, and, but the one for the Olympic of Peace, I would like to read that, and then I'm going to invite all of my council colleagues to come in and take a group picture with, with all of you, if you don't mind. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the 23rd Winter Olympic Games of the modern era will be held in Pyeongchang County, the Republic of South Korea, from February 9 through February 25, 2018. And whereas on July 6, 2011, the International Olympic Committee selected Pyeongchang to host the 23rd Winter Olympic Games. And whereas the Olympic Charter defined the goal of Olympiism in the peace, into, into place sport as a service to harmonious development of humankind with a view of promoting a peaceful society concerned with the preservation of human dignity. And whereas the United Nations General Assembly adopted the resolution by consensus, building a peaceful and better world through sports and Olympic ideal, supporting the Olympics through aim to ensure the safe passage of participation of athletes and spectators of February's 23rd Winter Olympic Games. And whereas the City of Los Angeles hopes that the 23rd Winter Olympic Games will encourage peace and stability of Korean Peninsula and serves as a catalyst to foster cooperation and prosperity in East Asia, upholding the spirit of the Olympic character. And now, therefore, I, War-tan Garpetian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby extend our community's congratulations and pride of Republic of South Korea and express our good wishes and strong support for 23rd Winter Olympic Games in February 2018 to be deemed as Olympics of Peace." With that, I ask.
I'd like to ask the council colleagues to take a group picture with the delegation.
With the mayor's indulgence, if I can say a few words.
Of course, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate the Korean-American community with Korean-American Day and commend all Korean people for always looking for a peaceful, bright humanitarian solution to this division between North and South Korea. I, I don't know, we're very far, but I strongly believe that eventually that's going to happen, and it's going to happen very peacefully. And no matter how strange the news are coming out of North Korea, sometimes unreasonable. For example, last week, at the end of last week, right after me and my colleagues left the island of Hawaii, apparently the people there were notified that there was a nuclear launch against Hawaii from North Korea. So, anyway, from the pages of the bazaar. But the great people, I think all of us have visited South Korea and have been immensely impressed by it and believe in the strength of the Korean people. And congratulations once again for, and, and thank you for always looking for a peaceful way out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your one, one speech. I have to go? I'm sorry? I can't, I, I.
So, any more comments?
Oh, any more comments? Councilmember Najarian, Devine.
I will. Having attended the eighth presidential inauguration ceremony of the Korean-American Federation of North, of North Los Angeles Sunday, I also see a lot of familiar faces, but it's such a pleasure and an honor to meet the Council General with all of your friends and, and countrymen. You have a wonderful country, wonderful people. We here in Glendale are so proud to be your friend, to have sister cities in Korea, friendship cities in Korea, and it's, it's a wonderful country, wonderful people, and thank you all for being here.
Thank you for your one word. Gamsa-hamida.
Mr. Council General, you are a lucky man because you have a great job, and that is to represent Korean-Americans in the great city of, well, the Southern California region, but especially here in Glendale. The Korean, the Korean community is very rich and adds to our great fabric. You have great business leaders, you have great students, great athletes, great artists, and we're very glad that you're part of the Glendale community. So, thank you very much and good luck with your future endeavors.
Excellent. Thank you. And what's next on the agenda?
One before you go.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. How can I forget my friend?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor for me to stand before you for fifth year in a row to celebrate the Korean-American Day. I just wanted to remind you that the, celebrating 115 years of immigration for Koreans to the United States is 15th Korean-American Day in California, 13th in the nation. And Korean-American Day is just not a day that to just to celebrate our Korean-American heritage and culture and tradition and immigration history, but it's also to present, express our appreciation to all our brothers and sisters, especially you, all of you here in Glendale. I mean, without your, your sacrifice, your honor, your respect, all, all you have done, support you have provided, your tenori events encourage us to be part of the city government, part of the old operation that's going on within here. It's an honor to call all of you, our friends, and also partners in serving our diverse community, and we really thank you. And in showing the appreciation, I brought the calendars again. Again, this is the Korean-American Day calendar made by children in L.A. County. It's very beautiful calendar day from the AR contest. This will remind you each month what kind of friendships we all share. So, I'd like to present this to each one of you and also to Ari.
Thank you.
And hope to see you again next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. What's next on the agenda, please?
Under Consent Items, Item 4, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Okay. Any questions on the consent calendar? Okay. Is there a motion to move the calendar?
I'll move the calendar.
There's second.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanyan, Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 5 is City Council and Staff Comments.
Okay. Council comments?
Well, I'll go first.
Okay.
I mentioned the inauguration Sunday that I attended along with the mayor, and also Sunday night was the 127th anniversary of the ARF, and it was wonderful. And I congratulate the Armenian organization for all the wonderful work that they've done through the years. I would like to ask Mr. Galanian, if I might, about a staff report regarding policy for the installation of speed bumps that we had talked about previously, specifically the policy that requiring a certain number of cars to trigger a speed bumps and in relationship to the issue on Henrietta. Where we are with that status.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council. Councilmember Devine, per your request, and I believe was seconded by Councilmember Sinanian, we revisited the existing, our current traffic calming guidelines and made some modifications, took it to the Transportation and Parking Commission back in October of last year. After a lengthy discussion, the, the members of the commission had some comments, some recommendations, and suggested changes. Staff returned to the drawing board. They have researched the available comparison with other cities and are planning to go back to the Transportation and Parking Commission with modification and responses to their suggestions on February 26 at their regular commission meeting, after which it's my hope that we can bring the final report for your consideration sometime in the spring of this year and the next few months. As for the request on Henrietta Avenue, on two occasion, we, occasions, we had conducted traffic studies. Both occasions, the, the volume and the speed did not meet the warrants as dictated by the traffic calming guidelines. So, we, we will see, based on your consideration and desired changes, we may have to reconduct another study to see if they will fall within the criteria of the, the new and updated guidelines.
That is if we change the policy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. And that'll come back in the spring?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Any comments? I have one card from, from our staff, Laura Martinolich.
From library.
Martinolich, sorry?
Yes. It's a library presentation.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laura Martinolich, and I am here tonight to announce some exciting author events at the downtown central library of the Glendale Library Arts and Culture Department. Tomorrow, to start at 6:00 P.M., the Friends of the Glendale Public Library will welcome USC history professor Stephen Ross for a reception and book talk. The reception will be held in Reflex Space, the library's new gallery, which currently features the exhibit "I Am: Narratives of the Holocaust." I Am brings together contemporary photographs and rare artifacts and archives to examine various narratives of survival and identity created during the Holocaust and later. Following the reception at 7:00 P.M., Dr. Ross will speak about his bestselling book, Hitler in Los Angeles: How Jews Foiled Nazi Plots Against Hollywood and America. Hitler in Los Angeles tells the chilling, little-known story of the rise of Nazism in Los Angeles and the Jewish leaders and spies who stopped it. Beginning on January 27 and running through March 14, the Reflex Space Gallery will feature the exhibit Invisible: The U.S.-Mexico Border at Reflex Space. This exhibition will explore physical, emotional, and socio-economic narratives across the U.S.-Mexico border. To expand and amplify upon the timely and important top of immigration, the library will also feature additional book talks. On Wednesday, February 21st, we are proud to present our 10th One Book, One Glendale event. This event brings together community members to read and experience the same book. This year's book is The Tortilla Curtain by USC distinguished professor of English T.C. Boyle. Originally published in 1995, this novel is as timely and relevant as if it were just published. Now, more about Tortilla Curtain. Topanga Canyon is home to two couples on a collision course. Los Angeles liberals Delaney and Kira Mossbacker lead an ordered sushi and recycling existence in a newly gated hilltop community. He is a sensitive nature writer, she an obsessive realtor. Mexican illegals Candido and America Grincon desperately cling to their vision of the American dream while also fighting off starvation in a makeshift camp deep in the ravine. And from the moment a freak accident brings Candido and Delaney into intimate contact, these four and their opposing worlds gradually intersect in what becomes a tragicomedy of error and misunderstanding. It is now my pleasure to introduce Robert Gordon, our Friends' president, to share information regarding the other two book talks.
Thank you. Good evening. Friends of the Glendale Public Library is indeed sponsoring two other immigration-themed book, book talks next month to complement the library's One Book, One Glendale event. On Thursday, February 8, at 7:00 P.M., we're thrilled to be hosting bestselling author and journalist Lauren Markham to discuss her recent book, The Faraway Brothers: Two Young Migrants and the Making of an American Life. The book chronicles the real-life journey of 17-year-old twins Ernesto and Roel Flores as they make their way from rural El Salvador across the Rio Grande and, and the Texas desert into the hands of immigration authorities, and from there to their estranged older brother's custody in Oakland, California. The book has been described as a coming-of-age tale that is also a nuanced portrait of Central America's child exodus, an investigation of U.S. immigration policy, and an unforgettable testament to the migrant experience. The New York Times called The Faraway Brothers impeccably timed, intimately reported, and beautifully expressed. Then, on Wednesday, February 28, at 7:00 P.M., we're pleased to have Los Angeles-based author Tim DeRoche and illustrator Daniel Gonzalez, who will be sharing their beautiful graphic novel, The Ballad of Huck and Miguel. This book is a retelling of the Mark Twain classic, The Adventures of Huckleberry Finn, with a real contemporary twist as Huck and his illegal immigrant friend Miguel have an inspired adventure down the Los Angeles River. All of these author events, taken collectively, we, we believe will provide a rich and thought-provoking examination of the issues around immigration that will benefit our community. If I can make one more quick announcement, Friends will be having a book sale on Saturday, January 27, from 9 to 3:00 P.M. It's going to be an open-air book sale in the Central Park de Seo, next to the Museum of Neon Art and Steps from the Friends Backdoor Bookstore, which is on the west side of the library. We will have music. The 222 East Performances, performers will be there that day. Friends grab bags will be available for $10 and free admission to Mona with any $5 purchase. So, as you can tell, we have a whole lot going on at the central library, and we hope to see all of you soon and often. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. What's next, please?
Next item is Community Event Announcements, followed by any person who wishes to forego the five-minute oral communications, speak for three minutes.
Okay. I have a few cards. Do we have any more cards with you? That's it?
That's all we have.
So, first speaker is Margarita Vedisian, followed by Karo Kerkonian.
Saro.
Saro. Saro Kerkonian, sorry. Saro Kerkonian, sorry.
We already discussed with John about the questions, so...
Okay.
I want to excuse, but I wish Happy New Year's to all of you.
Thank you, thank you very much, same to you. Saro?
Can you bring it up again?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Garpetian, honorable councilmembers Devine, Sinanian, and Najarian, and leaders of the Glendale, City of Glendale. I'm here on behalf of the Armenian Bar Association to announce two important educational events that we have partnered with the Glendale Community Services and Parks Department with. It's, the flyer's up for everyone to see. It's an educational program designed to educate citizens of Glendale about elder abuse, the warning signs, how to prevent it, and the laws that are designed to protect our senior citizens. The guest speaker is veteran Los Angeles County Deputy District Attorney Amy Ashvanyan. And the first event is going to take place tomorrow at the Adult Recreation Center, 201 East Colorado. And tomorrow's presentation is in Armenian. And then on February 8, there's an event at Spar Heights Community Center, the same program's going to be presented at 1613 Glen Quill Way in North Glendale. The event is free, it's purely a pro bono event, there's no solicitation of clients or anything like that, it's simply an educational program to help protect our senior citizens and elderly. And I also want the community to know that we're planning some additional lectures with the Community Services and Parks Department that are going to focus on social security issues and senior housing. The dates haven't been set yet for those, but we welcome everyone to come to these events and learn about these important issues facing our elderly. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Belzer, followed by Guillermo Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name is Michael Belzer. I'm the president of Friends of Shossean, an all-volunteer, nonprofit organization dedicated to the preservation and use of the Shossean Tea House in beautiful Bran Park. And I wanted to let you know that we're starting off the new year with a great event. The delegation that visited us from Japan in July to give us some consultation about how to improve the garden is back. They arrived yesterday, seven of them, and over the week, four more will arrive, and all of them will be working in the garden all this week. So it's going to be a great experience, and we're going to cap the event off with a Sunday event, a family fun day that's in conjunction with the Japan Foundation. I brought flyers for the event, and I'll leave them here with you. We're going to be offering two workshops for kids. At 11:00 AM, it's palm leaf craft, it's a traditional art in Japan, they can make various designs from palm leaves. Then at 1:00, it's making the beautiful Japanese kite and being able to fly it around the park. And then at 3:00, a very special event, a special guest from Japan, Mr. Michikazu Taneda. He is a master of the musical art of No, and at 3:00 PM, he will give a short presentation, a 15-minute presentation performance right on the veranda. And I'd like to invite any and all of you to come. Some of you were able to make it to our December event, and that was great. We'd like to welcome him and show him that we value his time here. Council General Akira Chiba will also be there, and he would like to extend, once again, his personal appreciation and thank you to all of you for the support that you've been giving to the Tea House. Along the lines of support, the Japan Foundation has recently pledged that they will provide financial support for the renovation of the interior of the Tea House. And this is a huge thing for us as Friends of Shossean and for the City of Glendale. It's been something we've been working on for years, and now we have a partner that will help us do it. So we're in the process of finalizing the details, and then we'll formalize it with the city. And thank you very much for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, next speaker Guillermo Garcia. Followed by Mr. Mohil, Mike Mohil.
Mouse is right there, you can use it to answer. Mr. Mouse?
Yeah. Honorable Mayor, honorable councilmembers, staff, members of the public, we are the small organizing committee that held this Dia de los Muertos at Pacific Park Library just last year in November, and we just want to talk about the highlights of what we've done so far. My name is Omar Ortega, I'm just a design consultant. Jenny Canionas Skater is a librarian at Seaside, and Guillermo Garcia and Christine Marcosian are both staff at the Glendale City Library. And we can start with Guillermo to talk about the whole thing. Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, so let's see. Oops. Oh, I was supposed to...
I can just move it, I'll move it.
Oh, just, okay, there you go. Yes, so we just want to tell you a little bit about our Dia de los Muertos event last year, November 2. It was really successful, we want to show you a few pictures. So this is some artwork. We have an altar, we have some Glendale famous people there at the top of the altar, like Mr. Brand and Amelia Earhart. We have some activities, like Storytime, Christine's going to tell you more about that, but we just want to tell you it was really successful. We reached about 300 people for a branch library that we think that's a really good number, and that night, it was a Dodgers game night. So that was like a challenge, really. And then we still...
Yes.
So we got 300 people, and we think that's a really good number. And why don't you tell us about the activities we have?
Sure. We had bilingual Storytime, one of the stories we read was about the Dia de los Muertos, the event. We also had skull paintings, so all the children attending the program were, they each had an individual skull which they were able to decorate. We had face painters, so the children had, and adults as well, they had their face painted, as you can see in the pictures. We had little skull tattoos, we had kite-making and mask-making as well. So just different, various activities that they were able to spend around an hour to two hours participating in the different activities. And we hope to continue expanding that as well.
Because it was so successful, we want to do it again, but bigger, this time bigger. This is our plan for 2018.
Yeah, given the fact that we've had a lot of residents and participants and a lot of kids to jump in, we've... You want to talk further of the budget? Okay, well, you can see on the screen there, this is sort of the event budget, that we had mostly volunteer efforts, but just in terms of the cost, in terms of bringing the food and the decorations and the like.
But then also, it's in kinderation, so the budget of stuff that was actually spent was a little bit less.
So 2018, we're going to be holding it on September, Saturday, November 3. And it's actually, we got very lucky, we're actually going to be doing it at the Maryland Paseo.
Perfect.
You can see in this graphic image and aerial photograph where it would be. The idea is to sort of light up the whole paseo in an orange glow at night, because this will be conducted at night. And the idea is like, and you can see the lights kind of extend towards the Central Library. It's kind of interesting to see how we can bring people from the diagonal crosswalk, since that's a very concentrated area of pedestrians, to illuminate the Central Library in an orange glow, to have residents or people just kind of walk towards that area, and there will be some signs to sort of direct people towards the paseo itself. So that's kind of like, it would look like. This is sort of just what the paseo would look like, there would be like streamers, it would just have the simple stuff that we just done just last year with the library, and it's illuminating the buildings, especially the parking structure has like these little notches that allows like an orange glow to come at night. So the idea is like, just taking everything outdoors from the library, still family-oriented in terms of having activities, in terms of mask-making, kite, face-painting, skull-painting, kite-making, Storytime, a cultural exhibit, because Dia de los Muertos is not just a Mexican tradition or cultural tradition, there's a lot of Latin countries or those practicing in that culture that we wanted to bring about too, so like stuff from El Salvador, Peru, the Philippines, Guatemala, to sort of talk about the exhibits and how Dia de los Muertos is celebrated throughout the world. And then we're also considering doing some musical performances, but the one thing that we wanted is ways to bring more of the community together is to like have a community altar. So families can bring like pictures of their loved ones or something like that to have on display, it'd be interesting to see like people could actually talk about the stories of their loved ones and how they lived their life and the cool things that they've done. So that's kind of the ideas that we're having planned as well, so.
Okay. So it's on November 3?
November 3.
Okay. And time, what time?
From 6:00 to 8ish, it's going to be in the evening. You have to...
Evening, ma'am.
It will be in the evening.
The time here is going to be maybe like 5:00 to 9:00 or something like that, toward the evening. Okay. And you'll come back before then to remind us again, right?
There are many more, there are many more details coming up, and we're doing a site visit this Thursday to go over some more of those details, but we're really excited about the community altar and what we can do to kind of help build connections between our really diverse and exciting cities. So we thank you and hope for your support too, in making this event an annual event and also making it a bigger event too. So thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Najarian.
Before you go, it's a great idea, it's a great location, centered in our Arts and Entertainment District and our paseo, which you probably missed today's discussion, but we're talking about really making it a centerpiece. In fact, we had been, my wife, the Halaciense, Halaciensa?
Halaciense.
Halaciense, got together with our former city manager, and it was our intent to do something a little bit bigger. But you are doing it on your own, on your own accord, and so I would very much support that. It's a great cultural recognition, it's a fun time, it's highlighting our wonderful city and our wonderful culture, so maybe, maybe we can help them make this a success.
You know, like other cities like Riverside, Los Angeles, they had bigger events, like really blocks of events. So this is just the beginning. My personal dream is like to have this on Bran Boulevard, that may happen in a few years, who knows, but...
But this is a wonderful spot for me.
Yes, definitely, definitely. You don't need Bran, the way it's going to turn out, the future of Maryland, believe me, you want Maryland. Perfect, okay, so...
More to come, and thank you guys.
Yes, we're looking for sponsors too, so anyone who, you know, yes, thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Mohil.
Good evening, councilmembers, my name is Mike Mohil. Playing by the rules, during the 2017 election, there were many candidates seeking the office of city council. I was one of those candidates seeking that honor. A few months before the April 2017 election, council had decided to increase the individual campaign limit from $1,000 to $1,100. Incumbent council candidate Ara Najarian approved the increase for individual campaign limits. After the election and after all the winners were announced, it seemed that Councilman Najarian, Mr. Law and Order, decided not to play by the rules. On March 20, 2017, two weeks prior to the April election, a political action committee was formed to circumvent the city's new individual campaign limit of $1,100. The committee group was named Glendal Voters for Good Government. This PAC, Mr. Sinanian, was funded exclusively by Mr. Najarian's good friend and Glendal resident, Mr. Timmy Margerosian. Mr. Margerosian is a well-connected transportation and service provider with companies like Southland Transit. Mr. Najarian had expended $102,000 for his reelection, and Glendal Voters for Good Government PAC expanded an additional $25,000 on his behalf. Mr. Margerosian was circumventing our campaign law to guarantee that Mr. Najarian would be re-elected and continue on the Metro Board and approve any transportation contracts that would favor Mr. Margerosian's companies. In 2016, the MTA Board, to which Councilman Najarian belongs, awarded Mr. Margerosian bus operations over $67 million in contracts. Councilman Ara Najarian, Mr. Law and Order, had set a new precedent for Glendal politics for future millionaires, that is, millionaires, ladies and gentlemen, viewing audience, who want to circumvent the established Glendal individual campaign limit of $1,100. Councilmembers, please do the right thing and marginalize Mr. Najarian, and consider another person to represent our city on the Metro Board, an individual who would put Glendal residents' interests first while on the Metro Board and not the interest of Mr. Margerosian and his companies. Mr. Najarian will tell the public there's no conflict of interest with Glendal resident Timmy Margerosian, but Mr. Margerosian circumvented our city law to benefit his friend, Councilman Ara Najarian. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last card.
Well, I have something to say. First of all, Mr. Mohil, if your sarcasm is to call me a law and order candidate or a law and order individual, I challenge you to expose criminal histories of yourself and myself. We'll see who the law and order person is. Secondly, ladies and gentlemen, as reported properly, an independent expenditure was opened, and the key word there is independent, something which I had no connection with or direction with, and $25,000 was contributed to that particular independent expenditure committee. It was donated by a man named Timmy Margerosian. Mr. Mohil does not choose to state that Mr. Margerosian donated $50,000 to the City of Glendale Rose-Floek Parade the last time he was asked. He is a generous man, he is one who has done good work throughout the city. And the irony is tragic that Mr. Mohil is complaining about a independent expenditure that was created in my benefit, where, according to all the latest filings and the records, an independent expenditure was made for his benefit during the last election, he and two other candidates. Unfortunately, that particular independent expenditure did not follow the law and create a campaign ID number, they did not follow the law and report how much money that particular campaign committee received, and they did not follow the law to report how that campaign committee money was spent. Now, Mr. Mohil is sitting in front of all you and complaining about a legal process which was followed by a committee that I had no contact with that did the right thing. And he has the audacity to stand before you today and us and make such a charge. In fact, Mr. Mohil and his cohort, Mr. Roland Kadikian, were so proud of themselves that they said they made a report to the FPPC. Well, the FPPC looked into his charges, and the answer is in black and white, if anyone would like to read it. It states that, dear Mr. Kadikian, there is insufficient evidence to support a finding of a violation by Mr. Najarian of the Political Reform Act. So, case closed, but he has the audacity to splash on his website, to splash on his paper, these charges. Now, this is defamation. He knows that this came back, but he stands before us all, he and his colleague, who is a Water and Power Commissioner, believe it or not, folks, believe it or not, charging a city council candidate with wrongdoing when they know that it has been investigated and the case has been discharged from even further investigation. Oh, by the way, the complaint against his independent expenditure is ongoing, the investigation is continuing. So I don't know what to say, it's a shame that we have this every day that comes forth. It's a shame that I'm a public figure because I'm restricted in the types of defamation suits I can bring against someone like this. But it's defamatory, it's lies, and it is made solely on a personal vendetta, because I disagree with him and his other colleague, and this is what they do. Some call it bullying. This is what it is, folks. My hands are tied, but he has all the liberties in the world to say whatever he wants about me, and if anyone wants a letter, a copy of this, please contact me on my webpage, on my email, I'll be happy to give it to you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Next item, please.
Next item is under...
Next item is under, excuse me, next item under Action Items is 8A, Director of Public Works, regarding Western Avenue and Riverside Drive Rehabilitation Project. 8A1 is a motion awarding a construction contract to All American Asphalt in the amount of $1,358,073.65, authorizing to execute the contract, approving a 10% reserve for contingency in amount of $135,807.36, and rejecting all other bids. 8A2 is a resolution appropriating $104,973.21.
Okay, Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we'll have Rubick Galanian, Public Works Director, go through a couple of slides with you to cover this item. Rubick?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As it was read into the record, the item in front of you is a motion to award a contract for Western Avenue and Riverside Drive Rehabilitation Project. This project is a part of our annual and ongoing program of our efforts to improve our streets and neighborhoods. The location map shows the limits of the project. Essentially, the majority of the work will be done on Riverside Drive between the boundary with City of Burbank and City of Los Angeles. We will cross over within, into the City of Burbank to continue with some of the improvements within that area, as well as improvements on Allen Avenue from Riverside Drive all the way to the end of that street, Rancho Avenue, and Western Avenue from Riverside Drive to Victory Boulevard. The scope of work, generally speaking, includes street resurfacing, pavement rehabilitation, slurry ceiling, removal and repair of broken damaged side blocks, curbs, and driveway approaches, construction of new curb ramps to meet the Americans with Disabilities Act's guidelines, adjustments of existing utility covers, installation of striping, signage, and pavement marking, and one specific item to this project is the realignment of the intersection and some traffic signal modification at the intersection of Riverside Drive and Chavez Street, as well as installation of a bioretention facility that we've had good successes with in the past, and an entry marker at the same intersection. The engineer's estimate for this project was $1,375,000. We received seven bids, and the lowest bid was just under the engineer's estimate at $1,358,000 and change. We held a community meeting in November of 2016, as well as sent 400 notifications to residents and property owners impacted by the project. The anticipated project schedule is to start sometime in March or April of this year and be completed by July. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Since we're, thank you, Mr. Mayor, since we're repaving part of Burbank, can we move our Welcome to Glendale signs a little bit forward as a little tweak?
Yes, Councilmember Najarian, we will take that into account.
All right, is there a motion for this item?
I'll move the item.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we still have a long agenda to go. Let's, let's, let's...
I'm joking about the Burbank signs, but...
Local call, please.
Let's not create a war.
Councilmember Agajanian, Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Senyanian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
AB is Director of Public Works, regarding City of Glendale Measure R Program Update. V1 is a motion approving additional programming modifications to existing programming and funding changes.
Mr. Galanian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the item before you is the authorization and adoption of a request for reprogramming of certain projects that we are proposing to take through the Metro Board in April of this year, and I'll just take an, take the opportunity to update you on the progress of our Measure R programs quickly. So, as you know, Measure R is a half-cent sales tax for LA County that was approved by the voters in 2008 with the intention of financing transportation projects and programs. It's projected to provide $40 billion to traffic congestion relief and transportation upgrades throughout the county during its lifespan of 30 years. I'm happy to report that to date, we have used Measure R funding to complete 12 projects with a total of just over $18 million worth of construction. We have 10 other projects in progress in various stages from design to bidding to award and construction, and that totals to just under $7 million. The purpose of the item in front of you is reprogramming, a request for reprogramming of nine projects totaling $10.8 million. Just to give you a couple of examples of a better-known and significant projects that we have completed using Measure R funds, San Fernando Grandview at-grade railroad crossing improvements, as well as the Sonora Avenue at-grade railroad crossing safety upgrades, and both of these intersections, as a result of these improvements, were able to get Quiet Zone status. Projects are in progress rather quickly, Pennsylvania Avenue signal improvements, Doran Street improvements from Adams Street to Brand Boulevard that recently your council approved, traffic signal installation and modifications at various locations throughout the city, San Fernando Road and Los Angeles Street, traffic signal installation and intersection realignment. The new projects that we are taking to the Metro Board are additional traffic signal modification upgrades on Honolulu Avenue between Boston and Ramsdale, a study and technical study and traffic analysis of the various ramps along the 134 Freeway Corridor, citywide pedestrian safety improvement recommendation that will come before you in the next few months. We're also requesting additional funds to two of our existing projects. Council again recently approved the authorization to increase the contingency and a change order for the Glendale Narrows Culver Crossing Phase Two of the Riverwalk Project in the amount of $370,000, and the next project is the Verdigo Boulevard and Holly Highway, I'm told, and the two freeway. The reprogramming that we are requesting pertains to four projects, the 210 freeway sand walls we are requesting to be postponed to the outer years, as well as signalization of the two freeway ramps at Holly, widening of those ramps at Mountain, and Verdigo Road Street Improvements Project. I think that's it. With that, again, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
I have, I have a couple. First of all, one of the projects in progress is regional bike stations?
Yes.
And it's 332,000. Are those rental stations or are they just stationary, are they just bike hold, holding stations?
Councilmember Devine, these will be rental stations. They're not just bike racks, is that what you meant? And this is a joint project with a county and metro, so this is our share that we are contributing to that project.
I just wanted to, don't want to dampen the joy in that, but I just read somewhere that they're not doing well in LA, these rental, bike rentals.
The City of LA is looking at a different technology, more recent technology, and constantly being changed.
Okay, okay. And the 134 Freeway Corridor various ramp analysis, is that for widening or is that for something else?
The analysis, the technical study will show if we have the right way to widen, if it's possible, so that's one of the elements of the feasibility study, yes.
Okay, that is good. Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Question. Not specifically on this, Mr. Galanian, but the, we've been talking about the Glendale Streetcar project, and I had a meeting with a, with a company that is successful at getting full funding grant agreements. With the, with our streetcar, we're looking at a connection from the Zerion Train, Zerion Transportation Center and perhaps a hookup with the Burbank Transportation Center. According, according to that person, that alone scores extremely high on the scale of, on the competitive scale to receive those grants. So, the, the issue would be if we were to apply, and I understand that the approximate price per mile is about 30 million per mile for a streetcar. If we've got maybe eight miles, 240 million, and the federal government says, okay, we're going to fund you 80%, show us your 20% match, would we be able to come up with a 20% match from our Measure R funds or even perhaps Measure M?
Yes, Councilmember Najarian, that's an excellent point. There are several pots of monies, as you know, that we can tap into Measure M. I believe it's, it's a more lucrative and attractive. Measure R will take reprogramming, that's...
Which is what we're doing today.
Right, right, but that reprogramming is a large enough number that may take away from our other projects, but there's also SB1. There are certain pockets of money within SB1 for traffic congestion, other mitigation measures that we can tap into, I'm pretty sure.
So, you know, we've all expressed, all of us have expressed keen interest in developing that streetcar. So, keep that in mind. We're nowhere near even filling the application, but, but it appears we have a chance of being successful for, I mean, what a huge grant that would be, and LA would hate us, but that's okay. They get enough money. So, keep that in mind and don't feel that you have to spend or appropriate every, every dollar of the incoming SB1 or the Measure M. There may be something out there that we could shoot for, and if we were to get it, it would be, you know, a dream come true for, for the whole city, so. But I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with all this reprogramming. I would, was it moved?
Not yet.
I'll, I'll move it.
One second.
Local call, please. Thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Councilmember Agajanian, Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Senyanian?
Yes.
Eric Garfadian?
Yes, next item, please.
Your public hearings, 9A is Director of Community Development regarding amendments Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 to establish development standards for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, code amendment case number PZC 1727279. 9A1 is an ordinance for introduction amending Title 30.
Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we will have Kristin Asp, who will do a presentation for you this evening. As she gets the presentation going, as you know, the City Council adopted an interim ordinance on February 7th of 2017, and you extended that ordinance because it was good for 45 days, for 10 months and 15 days, and we are here this evening to give you feedback as it relates to the outreach that we did and meetings with the Planning Commission and give you that feedback for an actual ordinance to be implemented ultimately. With that, Kristin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the city manager outlined, just for a little background, some Assembly and Senate bills early last year basically required that, that ADUs be permitted and that they be permitted administratively. So, we prepared an interim emergency ordinance that was adopted in February. It expires February 8th of this year, and essentially what it did is eliminated the prohibition that Glendale's had since 1996 for a second.
Could you just be up for a little more, please, in the line?
Sure, I will do my best.
Thank you.
Essentially eliminating our prohibition on granny flats. So, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go over the, basically the contents of the interim ordinance. Not much has changed in this proposal for the final ordinance. I'm gonna cover the standards and criteria, outline the outreach that we did, and the recommendation from Planning Commission. So, basically, standards for ADUs, they have to be ministerial, so this means no design review, this means no CEQA. ADUs, accessory dwelling units, are permitted on any lot that has a single-family house. So, if I have a single-family house in a multifamily zone, an ADU would be permitted. ADUs have a maximum square footage of 500 square feet, and we are allowing one ADU or one guest house, not both, and I will go into the difference between those two right now. Currently, accessory living quarters or guest houses are permitted in our code, up to 500 square feet. The definition of these are that they don't have kitchens, no parking is required, they cannot be rented, they count towards development standards like floor ratio, lot coverage, landscaping, et cetera. An accessory dwelling unit must have a kitchen. It is independent living quarters. Must have a kitchen, a bathroom. It may require parking, which I'll get into a little bit later. It may be rented, and it must have independent access. ADUs can, can come in a number of different forms. They can be attached, they can be detached, they may convert existing guest houses or garages. The zoning standards that apply for floor ratio, lot coverage, height, landscaping, setbacks, parking, again, some exceptions that I'll get into, apply. They must meet, as all buildings do, they must meet building and safety codes, except fire sprinklers are only required if required for the residence. So, to describe attached ADU, so when, when a proposal for an attached ADU is considered, it is either within the primary residence or in the attached garage. If it's in the, if it's within the primary residence, it must have independent access without changing the building facade that faces the street. So, if there's going, so it prevents having a double door on a street front, so if you're gonna have a separate entrance, it would be, need to be tucked away that doesn't change the building facade. If it's in addition to a single-family house, it must be single-story. For detached accessory dwelling units, they may be located within existing permitted accessory buildings, such as a guest house or a garage. Again, these are detached accessory. Zoning standards apply for this as well, except that if there's new construction for garage conversion, you must have a minimum five-foot setback. Many properties in Glendale have detached accessory garages that are on the property line, so if you're gonna add on to that, that addition has to be five-feet setback. A second floor may be considered to be above a detached garage, and it's limited to 25 feet in height or, or 28 feet with a, with a pitched roof. If it is a second floor, that second floor addition has to be five feet from the property line setback. I'm gonna switch gears a little bit to architectural compatibility. The state does allow for some architectural compatibility in an ordinance, so any exterior modification to an existing building must be compatible with the existing residence. It must match things like paint, materials, roof lines, things of that nature. Continuing with this theme, new construction for an accessory dwelling unit is not allowed between the primary dwelling unit and the street front or the street side setback line. In, in very few cases, if, if a house has an extraordinarily large setback or 25 feet is the norm, perhaps they have a 40-foot front yard setback, we wouldn't allow a new construction of an ADU within that, within that distance. A detached accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 15 feet in height, again, except for the conversion of a detached garage where you may add an accessory dwelling unit as a second floor. As far as historic properties go, if a property is listed, identified on a historic survey as potentially eligible for California or Glendale Register or within an adopted or nominated historic district, exterior changes to an ADU shall not be visible from the street, and they shall not alter any defining historical characteristic. Parking. Garage conversions for an ADU must replace parking for the primary residence. So, if I have a two-car garage and I'm proposing to convert my two-car garage, I need to replace that two-car required parking onsite. An ADU needs to have one onsite parking space, but there's some exceptions to this, which I'll get to. I'll get to in a few slides. The replacement parking of your converted garage may be unenclosed, it may be within the driveway, and it may be within the setback. They can be uncovered, but they have to have a minimum width of eight feet by 18 feet in length. So, this can often be achieved on existing driveways. They can be tandem parking spaces, but we would not let you, it has to be the driveway for the primary residence. We wouldn't let you build a new driveway to nowhere just to, just to park additional No parking for an ADU is required if it's within a half-mile of a transit stop, and that, that does cover a large portion of the city of Glendale, so there'll be a number of instances where the parking space for an ADU is not required. An ADU is, parking is not required when the property is historic or in a historic district and a contributing building or structure. It is not required when you're converting part of your existing house into an ADU, because that square footage already exists, or if you're converting an existing guest house. Again, that square footage already exists. Also doesn't apply when on-street parking permits are required but not offered to the occupant, and when if, if it's within one block, block of a car-share lot, for example, a zipcar. Back to ADU standards that apply to all, property owners shall pay for all sewer, water, school district, and other applicable fees. For instance, Glendale has a Parks and Library fee, so that would be required as part of a proposal for an ADU, and that fee is, was changed to $4,700 last summer by council. An ADU may not be sold separately from the residential dwelling, it may not be rented for less than 30 days, and there is a requirement for the property owner to occupy either the primary residence or the ADU. If the property owner is not there, it needs to be rented as a single unit.
You repeat that car cost $4,700?
We can't have a conversation, but go ahead and get.
So, the Parks and Library fees that apply, it's a development impact fee for a new development applies to accessory dwelling units, and it's a $4,700 fee.
That's an ex, it's an extra fee on top of the school fees and everything else that they have to, the permit fees they have to pay.
That may apply, correct.
Right. So, it's $4,700 plus school fees and permit fees and everything else?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Fire sprinklers may be required if it's required for the primary residence, and fire safety can require additional setbacks if necessary. So, that's generally the, the standards and criteria for accessory dwelling units, but back in February, council asked staff to focus on three, three areas of this, which is the size of ADUs, whether or not ADUs count towards floor area ratio, and whether to change any of the restrictions on owner-occupied. So, we convened a small task force of homeowners and some business community, a member from the chamber, and a realtor who's also Planning Commission member. The, the chamber member and the Planning Commissioner couldn't make it, but we did present this outreach to also the Association of Realtors and the Homeowners Coordinating Council. But to summarize their discussion on these three areas, we discussed about the, the size of ADUs. There was a, a large discussion on whether larger accessory dwelling units should be permitted on larger lots. If, if we allowed larger accessory dwelling units, there'd be the ability to perhaps collect more school fees. At, at the conclusion, the, the task force did not want to change the 500-square-foot limit. They felt that it, at 500 square feet, it stayed truly accessory to the property, it was unlikely to change the neighborhood characteristics, and that it wouldn't compete with other multifamily-type units such as in the downtown. Kind of tied in with that is floor area ratio, whether there should be, would you, should you be allowed to exceed your floor area ratio limits for every property? The conclusion of, of the group was that, no, all the development standards that apply to the property, including FAR, shall apply. And I, I do want to point out a caveat that the state law points out, which is if I have a, a piece of property that is already at the maximum floor area ratio, and I have an existing garage, garages don't count towards floor area ratio per Glendale's code. If somebody wanted to come in and say, I'd like to convert that existing garage into an accessory dwelling unit, therefore exceeding my floor area ratio at the end of the day, we have to let them do it. And as far as owner-occupied, the discussion with the task force was really, was really more restrictive. They felt that it would be better for the neighborhood to require the owner to be onsite, whether it's in the primary residence or in the ADU. But from a, I think from, there was no, staff didn't feel that there was a practical reason to, to restrict this, so we are proposing to keep the existing rules as is, which means the owner either lives in the, the main unit or the ADU. If the owner is not there, it gets rented as a single, a single rental unit. So, it's no different than your neighbor who doesn't have an ADU, maybe they have an existing single-family house and a guest house, there's no restriction on that property from, from, from renting it as a single unit. Additional comments that came up that, that was not directed by staff were some concerns from the H overlay or the horse rancho area of Glendale, that ADUs could change the equestrian character of the area. I'll get to the Planning Commission recommendation in a second that addressed that, but I think there's a subsequent email that's come in to, to reconsider Planning Commission's proposal for the H overlays. For hillsides, there were some concerns about emergency vehicles and access. Staff felt that there was the ability to control is limited. Guest houses are permitted in all residential zones. The state requires that an ADU be approved for all lots with a single-family house, and there's no parking required within a, a half-mile transit stop, within half-mile of a transit stop, and we just felt the ability to limit ADUs in the hillside was really impractical. So, the Planning Commission recommended all of the, this ordinance as is presented tonight. In the addition for the horse overlay zone, addressing the concerns of whether or not ADUs may change the, the character of the H overlay zone, they suggested that ADUs only be permitted within the primary dwelling. So, this means that you could not, in an H overlay zone, convert a garage, you couldn't build a new ADU, you couldn't convert, if you had an existing guest house, into an ADU. And I think the ultimate goal of that was to, to protect stables and the horse character. So, some options for council tonight are to introduce the proposed amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission, to not introduce the proposed amendments, in which case the interim ordinance will expire and the ADUs will default to the state standards, and finally to consider any other alternatives not proposed by staff or the Planning Commission. I do want to point out that this is a zoning code amendment, therefore requires a four-fifths vote. That concludes my summary of accessory dwelling units. Happy to answer any questions.
I have about 17 cars. Do you have any questions now?
I have one question for clarification. On the proposal that the owner, the property owner be on the, reside on the property, how will we deal with entities that are non-persons, such as trusts or corporations? I would recommend that the trustees of the trust, one of the trustees, live on the property, and if it's a corporate ownership, that one of the officers of the corporation live on the property. I don't know if you've gone that far in the weeds on your...
I have not gone that far in the weeds.
But, right, I mean, there's, property can be held...
Yeah, I don't think we've looked at, at that level of detail, and maybe my staff can, we can discuss it after we've heard the public comment, but certainly with respect to trusts, sometimes it's obviously the beneficiary who's the, the beneficiary of the trust who actually resides, so they might be the trustee and the beneficiary, but we can, we can talk about it. It's intended to apply to individuals, that's correct.
Well, just a follow-up question or comment on that. The recommendation is not for the homeowner to live in the house, either the front house or the, or the, am I correct?
Correct.
So, they can, they can rent it to one family as one unit.
Correct, as a single rental.
So, it's not a condition for them to live in, in the front house or the...
Well, it's one or the other, right? It's either live in the front house or the ADU or rent the entire facility out. And that's what, that's what council, that's what Councilman Najarian's referring to, when the owner is, is electing to live on the property, either the main unit or the, or accessory unit, that that person live in one of those.
If they choose to live on the property.
If they choose, yeah.
And if I can, can I ask another question related? So, if the owner does not live on the property but wants to lease the property, they cannot, or the person, the people that are renting that primary residence cannot then rent the ADU?
Correct. So, it, it couldn't act like a duplex situation where, where...
Right, right. So, then it's, it's simply like if there's House A and House B has an ADU. If House A owner wants to go on an extended vacation or something happens and they have to leave for three months, they decide they want to rent the, lease the house. So, they can do that. So, on this house, on the B house where the ADU is, if the owner decides the same thing, then they should be permitted to lease that house with the ADU. Is that, that's what you're, it's the same thing, it's the same thing, right?
It's, it's the same thing, but eliminating the, the second rental of the ADU.
Correct, correct. So, it's the same as if, if they're just leasing the house. Okay. I just wanted to make that clear because I know there's some, there's an issue with having the owner on the property, et cetera. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Well, I have here a couple of questions. The second story issue that I had a huge issue with, you're allowed to build an ADU on the second, above your garage, basically, am I correct?
On, above an existing garage, correct.
Above an existing garage. And that ADU has to have five-foot setback from the property line?
The, the new construction has to be five feet from the, from the property line.
So, if your garage is 400 square feet, your ADU will be 400 square foot minus that five-foot setback. It will be a little smaller than...
Give or take, yes.
If you, if you want to just go with the footprint of the garage, it will be a little smaller. Okay, that was that. And also the, the replacement of the parkings. When you turn your existing garage into an ADU, you have to provide, if you had two, two-car garage, you have to provide two parking spaces on your property, on your driveway, basically. Am I correct?
Correct.
But it doesn't have to be covered?
Correct.
It doesn't have to be covered?
It does not have to be covered.
And if you are close to transportation or, or bus stop half a mile away from any trans, public transportation, you don't have to provide parking for your ADU?
You don't have to provide parking for your ADU. You still have to replace your two-car parking for your single-family house.
But it doesn't have to be covered?
Correct.
Okay. Can I, can I ask another question now that you've gotten, you went to the garage?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
The proposed ordinance states that the ADU shall have sufficient setback. Is that five feet? That's the fire safety, for the fire department?
So, if I have an, if I have an existing garage that I'm gonna convert that's on the property line, there wouldn't be a setback requirement, there would just need to be all of the, the building and, and safety code requirement to make sure that that wall that's on the property line is fire-rated, it meets all of the, the occupancy requirements to have habitable living on a property line.
So, then there's, what's, what does define for me sufficient setback?
I think sufficient setback really, for, for most intents and purposes, fire likes, likes three feet. What, this is an existing structure, wherever it is, we, you know, you have to allow the conversion of that detached garage. Anything new that gets added on to it, or if I'm, if I'm even just building a new detached accessory dwelling unit, I need to meet the setbacks of the zoning code, so in most instances would need to be six feet from a property line. The caveat that the state gives is if I'm adding on to an existing garage that's maybe on the property line, that new construction has to be five feet away.
Five feet. Okay, so the old is, is three feet, could, could possibly be three feet. Do they have to have that firewall? Does that one wall have to be a firewall?
That's, that's within three feet of, yes, yes.
And what about a window? Can they cut out a window on that wall?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. First speaker is William Vasquez, followed by John Shunning.
Mr. Mayor, how much time?
Two minutes.
I'm up, right? Good evening. My name is Bill Vasquez, and I'm a 31-year resident. My wife and I have lived in the city of Glendale for 31 years in the Rossbourn area. We've lived in Glendale because of the quality of life that the city of Glendale has to afford, the school system, everything that Glendale has a reputation for being good in terms of city management and things along those lines. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the original interim ordinance that was adopted in 2017, basically the ones that the young lady just spoke to. The original staff report, as you heard from her, calls for a 500-square-foot maximum, no increase in floor area ratio, and also the request to see the owner occupancy requirement. Accessory dwelling units are intended just, to be just that. They're not intended to be additional dwellings or residences built on the same single piece of property. So, mayor and council members, I urge you to vote to maintain the provisions adopted in last year's interim ordinance, to help us maintain the quality of life that we're accustomed to having here in the city of Glendale, and to keep our neighborhoods free of parking congestion, traffic issues, and population density, density issues. So, thank you for, very much for listening to, to my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Shunning, followed by Daryl Ford.
Yes, hello, mayor, and members of the council. My name is John Shunning, and I'm here to express my support for the Planning Commission's recommendations for the final ADU ordinance. I think the commission's recommendations are fair and appropriate guidelines to implement a law that was imposed upon us by the state without any local consultation. The 500-square-foot maximum area for a second unit is sufficient. I mean, there's no reason to have it be any larger than that. There's no reason to increase the floor ratio, floor area ratio. It's efficient as it is, and we certainly don't need ADUs permitted in front yards of properties. And I was very glad to see that the commission is recommending that there be owner-occupied, you know, requirement, of course, unless the entire, you know, property will be leased out by one tenant. And I think that's really important because as a landlord, I also know that owner occupancy by nature will better limit bad behavior from tenants, and it also leads to usually a faster resolution of any problems that may exist on the property. So, I think it's a very, very good addition. So, I know there's a lot of people here to talk tonight, so my comments will be brief, but I, in summary, encourage the council to adopt the commission's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Daryl Ford, followed by Kathleen Clark.
Good evening, councilmembers. Daryl Ford. I live here in South Glendale. I live over on Wilson Avenue. Got a nice, beautiful 1912 Craftsman home. I'd love to stay in for as long as I possibly could. Building an ADU at my home would enable me to do that. Actually, to be frank, maybe move my in-laws into my ADU first, and then potentially later down the road, I'd be able to live there as well. So, there's just two issues I'd like to bring up tonight. One is the square footage requirement, the second is the required parking. So, as to the square footage, personally, I believe that, that Glendale should allow more square footage for their ADUs. I think that 500 square feet is a little small for accessory dwelling units. Again, I love my in-laws, I know they love each other, but I think 500 square feet, they're gonna kill each other, a little bit of a space. So, I'd love a little bit more space for that. And along that issue, I'd also like to bring up another... And along that issue, I'd also like to bring up another point, which is the state code requirements about square footage. The state law is explicit about the minimum square footage the city can permit, or the, excuse me, like the maximum as well. Just going back to the state law, it says, "A local agency may establish minimum and maximum units requirements for both attached and detached accessory dwelling units. No minimum or maximum size accessory dwelling unit or basement percentage of proposed or existing primary unit shall be a solid ordinance for either attached or detached dwellings that does not permit at least an efficiency unit to be constructed in compliance with local development standards." I live in an R-1250 zone. An efficiency unit in an R-1250 is 600 square feet. Why does the city only require 500 square feet? Local development standards say for an efficiency, it should be at least 600. The second thing is the parking. If I convert my garage and I lose my two enclosed spaces in that garage and I provide the code parking in my, on my driveway or whatever else, I can't come back later and build an extension onto my house because I no longer have my parking. I know the staff pulled this out in the report. It seems a little confusing, a little arbitrary to sort of punish a homeowner who has converted their ADU, or converted their garage to an ADU, and say they have to convert it back to a garage in order to add any square footage onto their house. It just seems weird that you would convert it to an ADU, convert it back, and then, again, go back to an ADU later just to get around this requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Clark, followed by Mike Moorhill.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kathleen Clark. I'm a stakeholder here in Glendale, and I, I'm in support of the, of both increased housing opportunities for people, but I really support the Planning Commission's caps on floor area ratio and basically all the owner occupancy and everything. The last speaker put me to mind, I understand his need, but I also see a world that's really dependent on each other. And I think we, as homeowners, apartment dwellers, whatever, have a deep responsibility to those around us. Requiring parking takes care of your neighbors, you know? And if there isn't parking, then that's why we have transit and more energy could be put into transit. I feel like the cap on 500 square feet is a fairly good-sized space. You can design a great architectural structure in 400 square feet. The world's leaning towards smaller footprints. We have fire issues. We clearly have flooding issues in California and mudslide issues, and all the density and additional paving is going to make those issues more complex. I really, as much as I have empathy for everyone's needs, I feel like 500 square feet can create a good livable space for a couple of people, and they just need good design. I do encourage design oversight, especially when going up. You know, I have an adjoining wall on my property next to my neighbors. If I, if I added a second story to my garage, I would destroy my neighbors' views. You know, I don't feel good about that. I hope other people don't feel good about certain things, too. So I just encourage you to follow the Planning Commission's guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Moorhill, followed by Ed and Carol Anderson. I mean, then you need to fill out separate cards, but Mike Moorhill. Okay? Don't sound so disappointed, Mr. Mayor. I always like to hear what's promised to me. Ed and Carol Anderson, followed by Steve Hunt.
Good evening, council. My name's Ed Anderson. This is my wife, Carol, and we are here to basically, well, basically, we're in favor of ADUs, but our situation's going to be a little bit different. We live in the horse overlay zone down there in Burbank and Glendale Rancho. I'm kind of a short-term resident here in Glendale. Only 32 years before that, I was in Burbank Rancho for eight years. My wife has been here since she was born, back in 1952. So we've been around the area. We have two houses in Glendale in the horse property. We have one in Burbank Horse Property. Now, the big issues we've been seeing, because we've gone to the planning committees, is they have completely shut down certain aspects of an ADU. The state of California states specifically that you're allowed to convert a garage into an ADU. Nobody in the horse zone wants to see their stables torn down. I don't want to see it done. You know, we live next to our horses. It's not a big thing. I mean, there's people who have their dogs and cats on their beds with them at night, so it's not a huge thing to have animals around. The big problem we have is the fact that people are going to be converting their houses into an ADU, but you can't convert a garage. This is specifically stated in the state requirements. Again, nobody wants to see stables torn down. I think there needs to be a little bit of a case-by-case review on all these ADUs in the horse zone. I think the fact that you are not allowed to put an ADU into the garage as stated in the state code pretty much is discrimination.
I have a picture here of a garage conversion with French doors right next to two stables.
One more minute. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So this is just an example of, I mean, I understand that people, we don't want to lose our, our stables, but at the same time, then why can't we convert our garage next to our stables if it doesn't affect the tack room, the wash rack, you know?
The feed, the feed storage, everything else that goes with it. Horse areas are unique. We all know that. Animal lovers are very, you know, they get very defensive when it talks to animals and stuff, things like that. But in this kind of a situation, what the planning committee came up with in the horse overlay is very limiting to what you can do at your house, and in my personal feeling is discrimination because it's not allowing me to use all our property except for like what the state of California has recommended.
We would just like you to consider us being able to convert our garage if it doesn't affect our stables.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Steve Hunt, followed by Linda Bevan.
Good evening, Mayor Carpetian, council members and staff. My name's Steve Hunt. I'm here to support the Public Commission's recommendations. The ADUs here, the state ADU laws here, because of the affordable housing crisis that's going on. From what I've read, it could last five, maybe even 10 years. But ADU units, structures, when they're built, are going to far outlive that. The building codes here in Glendale, a structure that's built now is going to last 80, 100, maybe 120 years. So, yeah, if you're, like the previous couple just mentioned, if you put an ADU over a garage and it blocks a neighbor's view, it's going to do that for 100, 120 years. So I like the, the current recommendation. I think it's reasonable. It'll contribute towards solving the problem of the affordable housing here in the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda, followed by Lorena Vartanian.
Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. I'm Linda Bevan. I live in Chevy Chase Canyon in a gorgeous, little, two-bedroom ranch-style house. I would like to build an ADU over my garage. It happens to be right next to my neighbor's garage, will not interfere with views, et cetera. It's, it's a good plan. But my architect is really scratching her head over the issue of the five-foot setback. And I'm not sure if I understand that state law. My garage has like three feet between the garage wall and the property boundary. To build a five-foot setback means you have to cattywampus, so to speak, the second story over the garage. Is that because of state law, or is that something that's in control of the Glendale code?
When, when you're done, we'll ask the staff when they come back.
Okay, that's question one. The other thing, issue is it can't be visible from the street, the ADU? Well, my garage is visible from the street, so by building over the garage, the ADU will be visible from the street, although the entrance to it would not be. So that's another concern. The third, the third thing also is a question. This $4,700 fee, is that a one-time fee, or is that an annual fee? One time. And the, what is the school fee? I don't understand that. If somebody could explain that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll explain it when, when the staff comes. I got school fees for any new development. There's a certain fees that you pay to our schools. Next speaker is Lorena Vartanian, followed by Kathy Yorca.
Mayor Carpetian, members of council and staff. My name is Lorena Vartanian. I'm president of the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association. While some members of council support ADUs up to 800 square feet, we believe a maximum of 500 square feet is reasonable. 500 square feet is in keeping with the longstanding maximum allowed for a guest house in Glendale, and it is 25% larger than a typical garage. By comparison, an 800-square-foot unit would be equivalent to two standard garages or a two-bedroom apartment. The goal is to create a unit that is accessory to the main house, not to create another house or apartment on the property. The minimum size allowed by law for an ADU is 150 square feet. A 500-square-foot unit is more than enough. Some members of council also suggest that new construction ADUs be allowed to exceed existing FAR standards. We disagree. Per state mandate, the conversion of an existing garage can exceed FAR, and the city must abide by that requirement. New construction ADUs, however, should be required to adhere to FAR. Density should remain within the DSP zone near transit and other multifamily infrastructure for which that zone was created. Additionally, state law allows an owner occupancy provision because the state recognizes that a proliferation of ADUs in cities like Glendale could change the character of single-family neighborhoods. We support an owner occupancy-only provision because an owner living on-site will better limit bad actions by tenants and can better regulate bad actors by virtue of proximity. It will also prohibit investors from buying into our residential areas for the sole purpose of generating income as absentee landlords. And unfortunately, while the goal of the new law is to create affordable housing, there are no provisions to regulate affordability. Let's fill the vacancies in downtown before we create more density, more traffic, and less parking in the single-family neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes, we have a question for you.
You're representing the Rossmoyn Homeowners Association?
Yes.
I asked the question about the owners living on the property in one of the two, either the main house or the ADU. And, but however, if they want to lease it, they have to lease the entire property. And that would be just like you leasing your house. Would you agree to that? Would that be something that you would, you could understand?
I believe the preference is for owner occupancy only, so that an owner always being there would mitigate any issues that come up on the property if you had bad tenants, bad actors' problems.
But if you, if you are leasing the entire, the house and the ADU to one family, then it's just like leasing a house next door.
We feel that at some level, it will be a little difficult to enforce occupancy on a property. There have been some arguments that it'll be difficult to enforce whether or not an actual owner is living on the property, but we feel equally that being able to enforce whether or not one family is living on a property would be difficult. So the preference is to have an owner occupancy requirement so that an owner is always in one of the units and basically looking over the tenants to ensure that, you know, things are going well in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Could Lorena, don't, don't go away. It actually doesn't make sense, but don't ask the city attorney. By creating this requirement, aren't you assuming that a person who has an ADU and wants to rent their property will be disenfranchised from being able to rent their property until they dismantle the ADU?
But again, the requirement is not that they dismantle the ADU. It's either, if you're going to, if you're going to rent out the ADU, then you as a property owner have to either live in the main unit
Yeah.
or the ADU, and then rent out the other one. Or you have to rent out the entire together.
That's what staff is proposing, but I think what they're proposing is, would lead to inevitably forcing someone to dismantle the ADU.
Or not, or not renting it.
Or not, or they couldn't lease it.
Well, I mean, it doesn't work. Don't worry, it doesn't work.
It does place a bit of a burden on the owners, but it also helps to mitigate single-family neighborhoods becoming multifamily residential areas.
I realize that, but it disenfranchises people.
But, but people that have guest houses and, and houses, a house and guest house.
Okay, let's, we need to move forward and we...
They rent, they lease, right?
Exactly. So you're agreeing with staff?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
That's why I'm asking.
Thank you, Lorena.
That's our position. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Lorena. Kathleen Yorca, followed by Jomi Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor Carpetian and members of city council. My name is Kathy Yorca, and I'm here on behalf of the Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association, which is to say that I have the unenviable task of filling Myrna Stanley's shoes. I'd like to thank staff for their excellent work on the ordinance, which I think will really help to mitigate the impacts of state law on Glendale neighborhoods. We support the 500-square-foot maximum for the reasons that have been stated, but also I know that council is very concerned about affordable housing, and several members of our board are as well. We note that according to the city's own analysis, the most pressing need for affordable housing is for households with income under $35,000 a year. That translates into a rent of at a maximum $875 per month, which just kind of boggles the mind. That's actually what I paid when I moved back to Southern California 22 years ago for a two-bedroom house. A 500-square-foot ADU will do a much better job of serving that population than a larger ADU. We also support maintaining the current floor area ratio. Doing so, it's important to observe, will not prevent anyone from creating an ADU. It just means that a minority of property owners would need to create it either within the existing residence or within an existing accessory structure. We're glad to see regulations that promote architectural compatibility and prohibit ADUs in front yards. We also support the provision that ADUs be out of the public view in historic districts and Glendale Register properties. Our HOA also requests the addition of strict owner occupancy-only provision. Landlords are naturally more inclined to take responsibility for tenant conduct when they are only a few feet away. Without the owner present and accountable, neighbors stand to suffer potential harm to their quality of life.
Thank you.
Thank you. So please require owner occupancy and then vote to adopt the ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson, followed by Liz Bradley.
Mr. Mayor, honorable city council members. My name is Jomi Wilson. I've lived here in Glendale for over 30 years, and I'm honored to serve on the Board of Directors of the Glendale Historical Society. I'd like to thank and commend city staff for the strong and reasonable interim ordinance on ADUs and to urge its permanent adoption. Particularly, we support protections for historic districts and for properties on or eligible for the Glendale Register, as well as the requirement that ADUs not result in changes to the front facade of an existing residential building. We also support a 500-square-foot maximum for a second unit. There are so many examples already in Glendale residents living in converted small garages and pool houses, et cetera, and this indicates not only is there a market for units of 500 square feet or less, but that this market is thriving, and it certainly will help address the affordable housing crisis. Finally, we believe that the current floor area ratio, or FAR, or as I call it, FAR, should be maintained in order to discourage mansionization. I call it FAR because if you'll pardon the pun, there is far too much mansionization in Glendale already. Sorry. These provisions will greatly mitigate further impact on our older neighborhoods. In particular, we believe the wonderful character of these older neighborhoods is a great part of what makes Glendale such a desirable place to live and work, and that this character is well worth preserving. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Liz Bradley. Can hardly read your handwriting, I'm sorry. Followed by Ute Tom Bow. Thank you.
Good evening, mayors and members of the councils. I'm sorry, I'm not that familiar with public speaking, so I apologize if I stumble a little bit. I'm here representing the Glendale Rancho Neighborhood Association. Joanne Hedge would normally be here, but she's unavailable this evening, so she's asked me to speak in her stead. As you will know, the Glendale Rancho area and the horses within it are part of the unique and historical neighborhood that is immediately adjoining Griffith Park. Many of the homeowners there, including myself, moved to that neighborhood specifically for the ability to keep their horses with them. We view our horses as family members, and we love that neighborhood, and we love meeting our friends, going out, riding together, being able to have essentially a neighborhood watch comprised of ourselves because we're all familiar with who, you know, what's normal in the neighborhood. So we're very anxious that the existing stables on a property, which are usually built to the high standards required by Glendale, that they not be converted or torn down. We are strongly in agreement of having ADUs being able to be there, not necessarily attached to the front house, however, because in the rancho, there's a lot of different-sized lots, older homes with unusual lot layouts, and existing guest houses that people might seek to convert that are often already at the back of the property or the side of the property. And the people that might live in there would be sharing in our horse-owning lifestyle. So to say that it must be attached to the front house seems counterintuitive because it doesn't match what already exists. So we would like to have the ADUs. We would not like stables to be permitted to be torn down or converted. And we would like the ability on the larger properties to be able to have the separate building, which may already exist, a utility building or a garage, be able to be the ADU.
Okay. So the question is, you're okay with the garage to be converted into an ADU, but not the stables?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker is Ute.
Good evening, city council. Ute Baum, Cottage Grove Historic District. I will forfeit my right to speak tonight, but I would like to hand this in for the record, a copy of which I have already sent to each one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cottage Grove Historic District? Where is Cottage? Oh, I don't see. Frank Gallo, followed by Grant Michaels.
Good evening, council members. My name is Frank Gallo. In your report, you probably saw that on page three, a focus group composed of five people said the following. Additionally, with 500 square feet size limit, ADUs do not compete with all the multifamily units being built in the downtown. No surprise that some of the same people that were involved in the entitlement process of the mega rental buildings completed in downtown, around Central, and the downtown-specific area are the same people that are asking for ADUs to be small so they do not compete with their projects. According to the city's 2015-2020 on-consolidated plan, it needed to build 920 very low-to-low-income units. Not even a quarter of those units have been completed. ADUs are a way to create affordable housing with little or no investment from the city or the government. How can it be that some of the people that made possible the construction of the mega projects in downtown, that many of them do not conform to the specific plan, are asking for small ADUs so they do not compete with their projects? Second, I understand to require the owner to be the primary resident at the time of the construction, but not at any other time because the unit will cease to exist when the person moves out. That doesn't make any sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Grant Michaels, followed by John Fagott.
Good evening, council members. My name is Grant Michaels. I'm the president of Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. All of the member associations have voted unanimously to support the ordinance as proposed and have the request to include the stricter owner occupancy-only requirement. First, I want to go ahead and commend staff for wading through and proposing a very thorough ordinance that addresses many of the concerns. Our support for the owner occupancy-only requirement as opposed to the option of renting it as a single unit falls more towards more a question of what an ADU is and what other requirements or limits essentially the state can allow of whether or not the state will allow an ADU to be rented, and those requirements or regulations are taken outside of the city control. Our preference, and we simply encourage you to consider, if it is legally feasible to restrict rentals of the ADU only if an owner is on the property. I'd like to emphasize our support for the 500-square-foot limit, keeping the setbacks and the floor area ratio as are proposed in the ordinance. To address the concern which was just raised, I represented the Homeowners Coordinating Council on that task force. My support for the 500-square-foot limit is not out of reference to the development downtown, but more to ensure that we protect the neighborhoods. Our position is that the ADUs are connected and an accessory to the main house where there is a connection. If you have someone living in that unit and they require more space or a little bit of time, they would have access to the primary house where that is accessible. We don't envision this being a separate apartment and making our neighborhoods duplexes.
Thank you. John, followed by Francisco Casares.
Hi, folks. How are you all doing? We have a problem, and that's housing. And it's not housing for the people that unfortunately are homeless and living in these encampments under this Highway 2. All the time I get asked, "John, do you know if there's a place to rent for my mother?" She has to move out of her house that she and her husband lived in for decades, and she, you know, can't afford to live. She needs help. People who just graduated from college and spent six years going to school and getting degrees and everything, finding their first job and trying to find an apartment to live in. So our problem is housing. We need more housing. So one of the ways to do that is to encourage people to convert and make an ADU and make more housing available that way. So that is what California has said. We want you to encourage these ADUs. So the staff has done a great job. I had a whole list of questions here that were answered by the staff and by the questions that were given. But I think in order to encourage these units, one, I wasn't aware that there was a $4,700 school fee. When you go to go and convert a garage, let's say, you know, $5,000 is a lot of money to set aside to pay for a school fee that you already paid for once when you bought the house. I am saying to you, maybe you can look at doing something about that, maybe lessening it or just saying, "Hey, is it necessary to charge twice for a school fee?" Don't know. Second thing is, I had solar installed on my house. And the city of Glendale had a nice refund, a nice incentive for putting solar on your house. And that was really one of the reasons that I decided to go ahead and go through with it. Well, maybe we ought to talk to the state of California and say, "Look, we want to give an incentive to the people who want to convert an ADU and provide housing to all of these people that need housing." And see if that might work out.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Francisco Casares, followed by Jerome Sander.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilman. I'm a longtime resident. I would urge you to be as liberal as possible with regard to ADUs because, as the other gentleman said, we need housing. Your predecessors have approved businesses, malls, shopping areas. These people have to live somewhere. So I think these ADUs are one solution. The alternative is more apartment buildings. So we all want to avoid the Los Angeles-ization of Glendale, which is already happening. This is one way to do it. It also avoids traffic congestion because people are going to live where they work. I agree with the idea that's been stated that ADUs should not interrupt the view of neighbors. I think that's just a good neighborly Glendale kind of thing to do. I think the 500-square-foot requirement is a little difficult. I think every councilman should be required to live in 500 square feet and see how you like it. I don't know how big that is. I think that's about half of this. And that would be a bathroom, a kitchen, a bedroom, a living room, and closets. I have a garage that's bigger than 500 square feet. The living space on top of that would just, would fit perfectly. I don't see why that should be smaller. Reductio ad absurdum would be if someone has a four-car garage, why not let them have as much room as they need? I also don't see a problem with Airbnb. I think a lot of us have used Airbnb in Europe. I think it's a wonderful thing. It helps the tourists. It helps the landowner. So I see no problem with having Airbnb here in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jerome Sander, followed by Susan Dasso.
Good evening, council and mayor.
Good evening.
I live on Metellaha Road in the North Cumberland Heights Historic District, and I'm on the board of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association. We support the ordinance as it's proposed, and I commend the staff for doing an excellent job on the issue. There's one exception that I would like you to consider, and that has been brought up many times, the owner occupancy restriction. I understand Mr. Senanian's point. I still think that having an owner on the property ensures the presence of the person who's most vested in the property. There was a focus group of citizens who worked with the planning department, and their position was they wanted the owner occupancy only. The staff decided that they would rather have it as it exists now, and their reason was that they thought enforcement would be problematic. I think enforcement will be problematic in either case and is not a good excuse for having the weaker of the two alternatives. In fact, enforcement of ordinances in the city in general has become a major problem. We see a lot of it. I think lack of staffing is a major part of this. Citizens and neighbors have become the eyes and the ears of the departments that serve the city, probably now more than ever. I'm sure they can be more than effective in helping enforce any kind of ordinances, particularly the owner occupancy requirement in the ADU, and will be highly motivated to do so. So please consider making that change to the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker is Susan.
They scared us.
Good evening, council members. My name is Susan Dasso, and I've lived, I live in the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Historic District, and I've lived there since 1983. I agree with what Kathy Yorca said and all the other people, and I've written a letter to you, and it has the major points of which I support the 500 square feet. No ADU can be built between the primary residence and the front and side street setbacks. An ADU built within a primary residence cannot change the facade or add a door directly facing the street. An ADU cannot be built in the front yard or the side yard of a corner lot. An ADU cannot increase the floor area ratio, which would lead to more mansionization. And newly-built ADUs must be out of the public view on properties in designated or nominated historic districts and on properties listed on or eligible for the Glendale Register or California Register. And I also support that the owner of an ADU must be an occupant on the same property.
Thank you. That was my last card. We're going to take a three-minute break, recess, and we'll come back in three minutes.
All right, we're back. Any questions from staff first, or you want to go through our comments first?
I want to go, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I want to go to Mr. Garcia again about this ownership, that the owner has to occupy one or the other in the property. It's my understanding, because I was for there being an owner on the property. That was going to be my stance. But now, when I learned that if the owner of this property wants to rent the property, that's the whole property. In other words, that would be like me going in and renting a house with an ADU, but maybe I don't even need the ADU. I'm just renting the house. But I can't rent the ADU, so it's negated. It's like it's not even there, right? And it would be unfair to a neighbor that lives next door, or it'd be unfair to me, the owner of this property, if the neighbor next door has a home and wants to rent their home, and they're allowed to do it, but I can't because it just doesn't comprehend up here. Can you enlighten us?
I'm not sure I can enlighten more than you. I think the council's already done. This requirement, remember the owner occupancy requirement comes from state law. When we had, when the council had the discussion about the interim ordinance, I think it was actually one of the councilors that suggested, well, why don't we do either the owner live on either the primary or the secondary, or they rent out the entire property as a single unit. And so I think that whether it's unfair or not, I have to leave it to the council to make that decision. The question, I think you've pointed to the right issue, which is if a landlord or a property owner who does not have an ADU has the ability to rent out their property, but there's seemingly a limitation on the owner who owns an ADU from renting out the entirety of that property to a single tenant without the use of separate renting of the ADU, is that a fair result? And so that's the question for you.
Okay. Any more questions from staff? Questions from staff? I do have a couple of questions. Chris, if you... The issue of ADU being visible from the public right of way. The lady brought a very valid point that if she has a small house on a small lot, if the FAR permits it and she wants to build a second story or builds over the garage, it will be visible from the public right of way.
Correct. I think it's a little bit of confusion with the historic districts or potentially historic districts, that if you're going to do an ADU, that can't be visible from the street. There's nothing that says a proposed ADU outside of historic districts can't be visible. It's just changing the building facade and entrances that have to be disguised.
So in a historic district, you cannot build a second floor or an ADU over your garage? If it may be, your garage is visible, because if I convert my garage into an ADU, it will be visible from the street? If I build over it in a historic district or potential historic district, it will be visible from the street? What is the...
Certainly over the garage would have the bigger potential to be visible. I think if you have the existing structure, your existing garage, you're converting it, and there is no change to the look of that garage. I think the interpretation of that would certainly fall within not being visible.
I don't know how there won't be a change on the look of the garage because you take the garage door out and you put a door or whatever.
You may not have to take the garage door out. Maybe you keep that.
Also, there was a valid point on the corner lots. Some of these lots are very large, and they're on the corner. Let's say if they have a garage on the inner side of the property, and they want to build an ADU, it has to be behind their house, basically, somewhere on the property. It would be visible from the side street, if you will.
Again, I think the historic districts or historic properties versus every other property.
Historic property or historic districts?
Historic districts or historic property has the limits on visibility. Nonhistoric...
But based on the state law, are we not preempted from regulating the garage to be, I mean, the second story to be over the garage? Or the ADU to be over the garage?
We're allowing ADUs to be above an existing garage. I think it's the visibility that...
Talking about it in historic districts?
Yes.
I think there is some flexibility in those areas.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we don't approve something and be challenged tomorrow. That's my main goal. I'm not saying allow ADUs over the garage in the historic district. I just want to get to all of the main points. And the garages to be converted in a horse overlay zone. There was a representative from their homeowners association, as well as a property owner who had like three properties, and they're okay with it. If I remember right, or my regulation allows me, I think you mentioned that you do not allow, the commission's recommendation was not allow garages to be converted in a horse overlay zone?
Correct. And I think to just add some more discussion to that topic, I think the concern that the planning commission was trying to address was the H-overlay zones concerned that ADUs may eliminate stables. You know, short of saying you could never convert a stable, I think that that was, the planning commission's solution was just to limit it to the existing house. But there's no rules on the books that say you have to have a stable in a historic, in a horse overlay zone.
Mr. Mayor, I would add, there's nothing that says you can't demolish a stable in a horse overlay zone.
No, I don't want to go that far. I understand that. I just want to make sure that I understand. I'm trying to digest all this information in a short period of time. I know the committee, the focus group, had a few months to work on this thing. So I want to understand what are we approving tonight. So...
So that was the planning commission's solution to address that.
Okay. And the FAR issue, again, does not apply if you're converting your existing garage?
If you have an existing garage, and you're converting it, and that sets you over FAR, we have to allow you to do that.
Okay. That's all the questions at this time.
I have a question, if I may?
Yes, of course.
To follow up on your questions on the historic districts. I want to make sure that I understand this correctly and that we have it. If they're going to build a garage, I mean, an ADU above the garage in the historic district, do they have to go to Design Review Board? Because other...
Design review is not applicable for accessory dwelling units.
Okay, so therefore, you just said that it says the historic district, ADUs in adopted historic districts shall not be visible from the street. You just said that if they want to build above the garage or build in, convert the garage?
Not above the garage, if they were converting their existing garage.
But who is going to enforce the fact that that garage looks like the rest of the house? I'm worried that if you allow this to happen, that the integrity of that house is going to be compromised.
Staff will evaluate those proposals.
Okay, let's continue with our commentary. Can we take a two-minute recess? Come back the 23rd or two weeks? Okay, we are back.
If you want, if you're ready, if you're ready at this point.
I am ready, I'm ready, but I just want to mention why is it happening and if you want to do it or you want to do it, whatever.
Right, that's... Well, let me just say a few... Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. We're here today for the introduction of an ordinance, and an introduction of an ordinance by definition and by process does not in any way bind the council to the language of the ordinance as written. It merely preserves the issues that are raised in the ordinance for approval or disapproval or modification and amendment at such time as the motion is brought for a vote by the council. And as you can see, we do not have a full council before us tonight, and this is a rather serious and weighty issue that is before the council. Mr., the mayor received an email recently, immediately.
Just five minutes ago.
And the email was from our missing council member, who due to...
Medical emergency.
Due to a medical issue, is not able to join us. He very much wants to join us in the discussion and the back and forth and the framing and creating of this ordinance. So what I think is best, Mr. Mayor, is I will ask that we introduce the ordinance. However, everyone needs to understand that all arguments for or against are being reserved until such time as it comes before us. It does not imply that any one of these provisions in the current interim ordinance that we're operating under is approved or disapproved by any single one council member on the dais. It's a two-step process, and we are going to be, we're going to be making hay at our second meeting, which may be at some later date, Mr. Mayor. What do you, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Najarian. So that is a motion that you're going to make.
So it's not a motion, it's just an introduction.
Before the introduction, I want to close the public hearing. And again, I had a request from Councilmember Agajanian to continue this, introduce the ordinance tonight as a respect to all the residents who are here, and we listen to all of you, introduce the ordinance. And on a later date, he wants, he really very much likes to be the part of this discussion in crafting this ordinance and be part of it, basically. So in respecting our colleagues, we are introducing it tonight, and in a later date, we'll come back and before the ordinance expires, because there's a deadline for it, we will come back and make the final decision on it.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just so that the record is clear, our charter provides that an ordinance is introduced at one meeting and then adopted at a subsequent meeting. So you've taken the first step, which you always do. The council is free under our charter then to make subsequent changes, as long as those changes are germane to the original topic. So in our view, the topic of accessory dwelling units and all the subjects that you've discussed tonight are germane to the subsequent discussion that we have in the next couple of weeks.
And at this point, if I can also add to that, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we are going to shoot for January 30th meeting. Next week's meeting is a full agenda, so I don't anticipate bringing this back next week, but we would hope to bring this back to you on January 30th. But we'll make the appropriate notifications, so folks who are here this evening would also know which date it's coming forward.
Okay, thank you. What's next on the agenda?
Next on the agenda is Oral Communications, a five-minute portion. Discussion is limited in time. It's not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager's office may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation. to the appropriate department for investigation or report.
Final room, please. First speaker is Aaral Chutchan, followed by Rubik Asparian.
Good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Aaral Chutchan. I'm a recently retired PhD physicist from Caltech. And I've worked in the area of collisions of electrons and ions with atoms and molecules. I'd like to address the matter of the Grayson Power Plant refurbishment and its timeliness in this period of global warming. I've reread, I've, I've read the environmental impact report and see that the refurbished GPP is scheduled to come online around June of 2022 for a 30-year period in, from 2022 to 2052. As I read the refereed literature, I see that the average global temperature will reach a critical increase of one and a half degrees over, degrees centigrade over pre-industrial levels at about the year 2030. This one and a half degree rise will lead to flooding of small island nations such as Marshall Islands and Fiji and threaten the shorelines of New York City and Boston, for example. And we've already, we've already seen examples of this occurring in severe windstorms and rainstorms in New York City. Mayor Bill de Blasio has recently sued the major oil companies, the fossil fuel companies for damages done to the city for the rising sea levels. And he's also selling off $5 billion worth of funds in his pension fund that are invested in the fossil fuel companies. Prior to the one and a half degree sea level at about 2030, it's almost certain that greenhouse gas emission requirements worldwide will be made more stringent. This will occur beginning at one-third to one-half into the projected lifetime of the GPP. And hence, the GPP could become a power plant too far. I urge that the GPP plans be put on hold and that a detailed cost-benefit analysis be carried out. Such an analysis could include considerations such as effects on Glendale residents, that is, the number of deaths, of breathing, the CO2, and any leaking methane from the GPP. Effects related to the upcoming critical CO2 levels as simulated by reliable scientific calculations. The high cost, half a billion dollars, and its tax burden on Glendale residents for the GPP refurbishment. The possibility of tying into existing and expanding solar, wind, hydroelectric, and possibly nuclear energy grids of California. The bucking of trends and actions of the Paris Accord, member nations, and the recent acts of Mayor Bill de Blasio are examples of the imminence of this situation. There can be many more components of this cost-benefit analysis that can be brought to light in a series of roundtable conferences involving all players. I encourage you to start this analysis before deciding on a new energy plan for Glendale and for the world. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Rubik Asparian, followed by Brian Waters.
Good evening. Sorry, my English no good. What do you reckon?
One, one minute, sir. Just by way of introduction, the gentleman asked our staff not to translate for him this evening, from, from what I understand, because he wants to speak quickly and doesn't want to be interrupted for translation. And we informed the gentleman that it's really up to the mayor and the council. But we wanted to allow him to speak freely and we can always translate later. But again, it's, it's up to you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
All right. Now, I'm Rubik Asparian. So, you know, I'm my son, Barusu. He knows that I'm here, so he's always here. He knows I'm here. He's got my car. My son's got me to talk to him. Sporty, very, very, very. In the gherkin, I'm bad, but professor. I'm sorry, it's the one that's in the kitchen. We're in the kitchen, we're in the kitchen. We're both here, because we're here. She's not sad, she's happy, but I'm here, because I'm here. So, I'm here. You're good, but I'm tired, I'm here, I'm here. I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. I'm not going, I'm not going, I'm not going, I'm not going. I'm not going, I'm not going, I'm not going. I'm not going, I'm not going, I'm not going. But, I'm not going, I'm not going. Yeah, Iran, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. 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 Yes, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy, I'm happy. Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy, I'm happy. I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. I'm not going, I'm not going, I'm not going. I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. Yes, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. Yeah, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. Yeah, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. Yeah, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. Yes, you're a son, you're a son, you're a son. Yeah, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. So, I'm not going, I'm not going, I'm not going. I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. I'm happy, I'm happy, I'm happy. Is, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going.
After, after the meeting. Next speaker is Brian Waters, followed by Artak Arroyan.
Good evening, council. Appreciate the time. My name is Brian Waters and I'm here to discuss or address the GUSD Carmel Partners development happening on the corner of Wilson and Kenwood, as well as Jackson. As the president of the HOA at Chester House, located at 234 North Kenwood Street, I represent over 30 units and over 100 people. And we are here to say that we are opposed to that development for a number of reasons. One, obviously, the traffic, the parking, the congestion are already issues in our neighborhood. And this development would do nothing but increase that. No matter what kind of traffic or parking study comes across the desk, it's obvious, we're there every day. Secondarily, the zoning. Carmel Partners are requesting a zoning change. And on top of that zoning change, they want to go over and above that zoning change, which to me is kind of ridiculous. Not sure what the point of putting a five-story development in that neighborhood would do. And I'm, I'm not originally from Glendale. I'm from the Bay Area, but I moved down here about 10 years ago and specifically chose Glendale for the quality of life. The neighborhood that we live in is, is close enough to, to the Americana, the Galleria, and Brand Avenue, and a lot of great areas, at the same time, far enough away to be away from those big developments. So I fear that this development, which would be literally right behind us and next door to us, would, would affect our quality of life adversely. It would deteriorate, not to mention the two or three years to construct the entire thing, the air quality. And finally, it seems that there are three big stakeholders in this deal. There's the GUSD, there's the Carmel Partners, and then there's the residents like us who live in this neighborhood. If this deal goes through as is, there are only two stakeholders that are going to benefit. The GUSD, who we support, but the GUSD and Carmel Partners. And the residents of that neighborhood would not benefit. So we're here to ask you, as the city council and representatives of the residents of Glendale, to put the desires and wishes of your residents above and beyond those to outside developer. So, thank you again for your time. Take care.
Thank you. Next speaker is Artak Arroyan, and that's my last card.
My name is Artak Arroyan, and I'm going to address the same issue that Brian just addressed. We live in the same building. So again, we represent almost 100-plus people living in that community. And we're against the development of that land that belongs to Glendale Unified District School, because they want to turn into five-plus-story building. That are going to, between Jackson, Wilson, Kenwood, and California streets, all the streets are one line. It will increase the traffic. It will increase, you know, the accidents and bring more fatalities, et cetera. So Carmel Partners want to build five-plus-story building with 285 units and only provide 300, uh, 286 units and only provides 385 parking spaces. So basically, it's going to be traffic collapse and no parking space. What else? So on December 13, planning and zone, planning committee voted against development, but it seems like the developer is still persisting and he's trying to meet with the neighborhood leaders. And he says this parking lot is going to be developed anyway, doesn't matter. So that's kind of the confidence that we feel and see in the developer, brings us to the point that they basically going to any open parking spaces and try to develop, even though it's against the general plan of zoning of DSP, because it's a residential area. So it will affect, again, I want to point us key words, quality of life for entire neighborhood. It will bring more, you know, dust, noise, and asbestos, et cetera, during all this three, four-year, you know, like whatever development. It will block entire view. It will keep us living in this claustrophobic situation. Our building, as I said, it has about 100-plus residents and 80% of those people are elderly. They're like, basically, I'm, I moved to this building years ago and it's my startup, you know, hopefully I'm going to move on. But these people, almost 20 units occupied by 80-plus-years-old people, they, it's just their, like, you know, last, you know, last place to live. Saying all this, I want to also point to, if this project will be approved someday, it will trigger the domino effect and it will, any developer would come later and ask you for, you know, hey, this is the new parking space, this is like open zone, can we do that? And they're going to point, you know, remember this GS2 parking zone, parking lots, parking space? Yes. So, sorry, I'm not like used to public speaking, especially on, you know, in front of the cameras. Another thing I want to point, there's a daily high school that's also on that parking. And basically, they're going to be building that monster, monstrous big building around that daily high school and leaving, leaving only 15 parking spaces, which is also a violation of the parking code. Okay, and saying all this, I know it's kind of not an, it's not an agenda and probably, I know, is it going to be like on the next week, on the January 23? Or you guys moved it?
We usually don't respond to the
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm finished and then we'll
I'm sorry about that, because it's my first time being here. Also, I want to pass an email that we, we, I mean, I have, I am a father of 11-years-old daughter who is in, you know, Glendale Unified District School, I mean, in the Wilson Elementary, Middle School. So the superintendent sent this email to all parents of Glendale, you know, students, asking them to sign, support this swap or development, not even taking into account entire neighborhood, not, not even explaining what's going to happen with the neighborhood if this will be approved. I want to just pass this for you guys. You just, you know, take a look, okay? Saying all this, I'm done. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
And appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like me to respond, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, if.
On, on the issue of the Carmel Partners project, that was before the planning commission last year, I can say at this point. It, it did not go through, as you know. The planning commission did not approve the zoning changes. At this point, the city council does not have the item scheduled to come before them, because the city has not received something from the developers as it relates to going back and possibly redesigning. So at this point, the council doesn't have anything agendized, nor does the city have something from the developer.
But it used to be, it used to be as 20, January 23rd, right?
Initially, it was scheduled to come before the city council on January 23rd. And that's if it went through the planning commission, which it didn't. And/or if the developer had a redesign and brought something forward to the city council, which they have not thus far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who was next?
New business. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have new business and I move that the claim of Glenn and Martha Bummer be compromised and resolved for the full and complete amount of $39,368.32. And the same is hereby approved and accepted. And the finance director is authorized to issue a warrant and said sum payable to the claimant for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution of a settlement and release agreement.
Councilmembers Agajanian, Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinadian?
Yes.
Mayor Garfedeon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. You are adjourned.